Commissioners Merkin, Corbin, and Jagiello absent.
Very good. Ray, would you lead us in the pledge?
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, our next agenda item is public communications. The time set aside during the planning commission meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. And for those who wish to speak to us, please don't take our lack of repartee as a lack of interest in what you have to say. It's that we can't take any action. So we'll listen, we may have a question. All right, I have one card, Russell Sidney. Come on down.
Thank you, Commissioner Quilisi and other commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Russell Sidney. I live on Oak Crest Avenue in Miramonte. I'm here to ask for the planning commission to provide more oversight and review of the active transportation grant that is coming up. I'm very concerned about the details of that project. And towards that end, I would like to provide you with some information about that project. Most of this information has been presented to both the Complete Streets Committee and also to staff.
Please make sure Sherri has one.
So the information in this comes from two years of working with the Complete Streets Committee and also working with and helping to organize the local bicycle advocates in the community. Unfortunately, over 90% of the information that's been presented to the Complete Streets Committee has not made it into any of the updates on the ATP grant. Only a small amount of the information that has been discussed has been included by staff in the current reports. Hence, my concern. To frame this for you, I've been a bicycle advocate for over 15 years with successes in the city of Santa Monica and working with the Pacific Coast Highway Safety Task Force for both Assemblymember Richard Bloom and Senator Pavly, more recently with Henry Stern. I have been involved with bicycles for over 50 years and have been engaged with commuting and active use of bicycles in cities all over the state, including Davis, San Francisco, Santa Cruz, Arcata, Eureka, Palm Desert, Ventura, and Santa Paula. Unfortunately, the presentation of the expertise that I bring to bear has not been to much avail from my point of view. That's why I am providing the information I'm presenting here to the commissioners in the hope that you will be able to utilize that information and carry the torch forward. One of the concerns is that the Complete Streets Committee has not prepared a safe rights-to-school plan in anticipation of the ATP grant, nor have they taken the addition of safe parallel routes and bicycle boulevards seriously and into account in preparation for this design review. There's also very little attention that has been paid to the connectivity of these routes with the county projects and the county planning. I am concerned for this because the design has many safety issues in the concept design that have not even been considered in the time period that's been there. The safety issues can be seen simply by driving down Ventura Avenue, stopping at the crossing to the Ojai Valley Trail, getting out of your car and waiting for another vehicle to come along. When the vehicle comes along, I would ask you to consider how on earth a bicycle could fit into the narrow gap that has been created and how it would be possible and to look at all of the various curb extensions that would be very readily become obstacles that would cause harm and possibly throw bicycles in front of moving vehicles. That's the kind of design that the city has been coming up with. There's a lot of those kinds of elements in the plan. They need to be fixed. I would hope that the commission and the council will do what it takes to take those things seriously because we're talking about people's lives and we're talking about the well-being of cyclists and we're talking about whether we are actually going to be able to get people to ride bicycles and get out of their cars and stop using fossil fuels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Sidney. A question for staff, because this involves the ATP grant. My understanding is that that applies to the two pieces of state highway that are in the middle of the city and it does not cover anything else. If I'm wrong about that, then parallel routes and things like that are something that we ought to look into. So that's one question. Second question is, where are we? And I know we've heard some of this in the Complete Streets Committee, which Kathy and I both attend. The stage that we're in right now, I think, on the ATP grant is the concept stage and we're about through that and ready to begin engineering design or something of that sort. Is that right?
I was going to announce this at the end when we have our report time, but there's going to be two public workshops.
Okay.
And I can wait and do it then.
Okay, okay.
That's appropriate.
I...
There's also that special meeting with the camp, the joint meeting with the city council.
The 16th and the 20th of October? No, of...
Yeah, October.
Of October, yeah. Okay, good. All right, so let's all keep that in mind. Yes, sir?
I'm not sure this is appropriate or not. However, if someone like Russell is in our community with the breadth of experience he has, why hasn't he been brought in? Or has we not known about him? Or why are we getting this now instead of a couple of months ago?
Russell Sidney has been a regular attender of Complete Streets Committee meetings.
In the past.
In the past.
In the past.
Not in the last two or three months or farther? A year back, okay. Of this calendar.
I'm on the periphery of this conversation. I haven't been to Complete Streets, but I'm hearing what Russell just brought forth. I understand we can't take any action, but I'm just...
The concerns raised by Mr. Sidney are concerns that cannot be fully addressed by the planning commission this evening, as it is perhaps evident not on your agenda tonight. The concern, I can't speak to the concerns, yea or nay, but the matter can be taken up with both the Complete Streets Committee, the Public Works Director, who's overseeing the active transportation project grant, which does cover highways 33 and 150, the state-controlled highways, in a joint project with Caltrans. And perhaps a better forum for these more or less political concerns is the joint city council planning commission meeting, scheduled for October 16th. Time, Sherri, on that? October 16th at 6:00 PM. And is that here? Is that Boyd Center? Tuesday, October 16th, here, 6:00 PM. The joint meeting of the City Council Planning Commission, just on this project, would perhaps be the best venue for that discussion.
And without speaking for or against any suggestion that Mr. Sidney might have, because it's not appropriate at this time, my questions were aimed at, are they relevant to the ATP grant, first of all?
That's not, that one I can't answer sitting here right now. I don't know the answer.
That's a question for staff.
Certainly.
Are these concerns relevant for anything except the 150 and 33 corridors?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Without speaking to the merits of any of the suggestions, which Mr. Sidney has put forth, you know, with great vigor in Complete Streets Committees in the committee meetings in the past. But I think we need to understand, what is it we're allowed to do with this and what are we not allowed to do with it?
And that full discussion will be had at the coming meeting.
Right. And so I just want to make sure we have the question on the table.
Certainly, the information will be passed to the Public Works Director, who's overseeing that grant.
Okay, great. Next is our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission two weeks ago, September 5th. Are there any suggestions from the commission for adds, changes, or deletions to the minutes? I personally found none, but that's just me.
It's minor, but I don't think I made the motion for item number four.
I'll re-listen to the tape and make that change.
Okay. Any other adds, deletes, or changes? All right, and I'll entertain a motion for... Oh, I'm sorry.
There was something I missed, and I apologize. Because I had looked at this earlier and I didn't realize that it had a motion from the September 11th meeting, which was the joint meeting. Am I correct?
This was a motion to approve the list of topics for the September 11th meeting.
These are minutes from September 5th.
I get you. Okay, that's what threw me off. Okay, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve these minutes as amended by Commissioner Lottis.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the September 5th, 2018 Planning Commission with the modification made by Commissioner Lottis.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Powers?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our public hearing item, Design Review Permit, DRP 18-009, recommended by City Council from a director's exemption, 18-010, for a project in the PL zone including the following work: revision to ADA path of travel to main entry, changes to approved wall locations, and of fencing material from wrought iron to CMU to match existing site walls with stucco and paint to match, located at 214 West Aliso Street. Could we have a report from staff?
Good afternoon or good evening, Chair Quilisi, fellow commissioners, Suzanne Regal, planner for the project. The project is here before you for the design review of the site walls that replaced two spans of wrought iron. And they have put up stucco wall, so they have worked beyond what the director's exemption in July had previously approved. And then they are proposing to reconfigure the parking lot to accommodate ADA parking space and path of travel towards the front of the lot so they can enter the building at the main point of entry.
They moved the ADA space.
Correct.
They proposed to move the ADA space.
Correct. I provided a site history on page two of the staff report that is very brief. It does show that the property has been used with PL uses for approximately the last 60 years. The developer, our director's exemption was elevated to a DRP through the process that we post and route director's exemptions to City Council and post on the internet for five days. If any individual, public or council member, object, that item is then brought forward as a design review permit to the planning commission. So that is why the project is here before you today. The project was routed under a preliminary archaeological assessment and due to the project involving ground disturbance and then was routed for tribal representative to review. And after 10 days with no response, we have determined that no further environmental review is required under CEQA Section 15303. Staff did conduct a site visit, like I was discussing, on the 23rd of August and determined that they had exceeded the scope of work that had previously been approved and permitted, which included that change of wrought iron span to CMU wall, so that it had, work had begun.
What's CMU?
Concrete masonry unit, cinder block.
Okay.
And then on the 24th, we issued a stop-work order so that you wouldn't proceed with any work that wasn't previously approved or permitted. On page one of the staff report, there is an error about the general plan designation. It is indicated as general commerce on our map under the general plan compatibility. We still would be able to make findings of compatibility because the use is substantially similar to uses that are allowed in the general commerce.
Page one, you said?
Yes, page one, under general plan designation, this parcel. It should say general commerce.
General commerce, not PL?
Correct. It is PL-zoned.
If I could just jump in for one second. It's really a mapping inconsistency. And I know in the back of your package, you have both the zoning and the general plan land use diagrams. They're at a very small scale, so it's not exactly reader-friendly.
Hard to read, yeah.
But if you look at those, the zoning is the PL, public quasi-public. And that's, I think, how the site's been treated for all these years since it was originally built as a convent. But the general plan land use diagram, if you look at it, you'll see a red square in there. It's that lot. It's the lone red square on Aliso in Kenyatta there. So it's a, I think, as Suzanne said, it's a mapping issue where ideally you would have your zoning and general plan consistent. It would be public quasi-public for both. In this case, though, there is no inconsistency of the project with the general commercial, general plan land use designation. So we just wanted to point out there's an inconsistency between the map. And this is ideally the type of thing the city should get cleaned up. So we have consistency between the two uses.
Okay.
That's okay. Speaking to the zoning, the proposed uses were described in Attachment C by a letter submitted by Diana Cyberson, which described the uses as community center and employee residence. I have provided in front of you today the definition of community center. Staff requests that you review that description or definition and determine whether the information provided to you is sufficient to find that it meets the definition of community center. The employee residence is a permitted use in the PL zone. And with that, I think we have one other correction that was just caught on the Attachment A, first line. It should say represented by Chester Jagiello, Alpha Stone, instead of represented by cornerstone architects.
I thought Chester, oh, does Chester have a corporate affiliation besides Tenpenny Construction?
Alpha Stone.
It's what?
Alpha Stone.
Oh, okay.
Which is listed on page one of your staff report.
Oh, Alpha, okay.
While you're looking for that correction, Chair, if I could add a couple more comments?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. One of the key things that I think the commission should focus their review and analysis on is the fundamental question, which is, do you find that the applicant has presented sufficient information to be able to answer the following question? And two, do you find that the applicant has submitted sufficient information, sufficient proof, for you to find that the project as proposed meets the definition of community center as provided, which is multipurpose meeting and recreational facilities, typically consisting of one or more meeting and multipurpose rooms, kitchen and/or outdoor barbecue facilities that are available for use by various groups for communal activities, e.g., meetings, parties, receptions, and dances? That's the key question before the commission, is do you find that there's sufficient evidence to either, to answer the question and do you find that the question can be answered in the affirmative? Bear in mind that that definition allows for for-profit or nonprofit community centers. Both would fit that definition, but the question is...
A for-profit entity in the PL zone is legal?
Yes, there is no, there is nothing in the PL zone that limits those land uses to nonprofit zones. Many of the land uses would be nonprofit, but there's no requirement that they be nonprofit. The classic example is restaurant, is an allowed service by CUP in the PL zone. And there's no obligation that you have a nonprofit restaurant. Public Limited is, the short term, the formal term is Public Limited slash quasi-public Limited, which a lot, that quasi builds in for-profit uses in certain contexts. That's a bit of a...
Enough to drive a dump truck through.
Well, and the reality is that taxation status is not considered in land use planning. Land use planning is you're looking at the question of what is the use on the table? And does that use, is it appropriate for the community? Is it consistent with the general plan? Is it consistent with the zoning table? Not, are they complying with the tax laws? Thank you.
I'm sorry, were you finished with the staff report? Okay, do we have questions for staff? I have a couple. I'm sorry, did you have any questions for staff? Please go ahead.
So, yes, that was one of my questions, was on the use itself and as described by the applicant. But, and I still have questions about that. I mean, in terms of what exactly is happening? Who is, who's using it? Who has access to any of the, any part of the facilities? Any rooms, room rentals? Even if there's a kitchen facility or barbecue facility, which I didn't see outside. So I just, I guess I'm looking for more detail about who, what, and when, basically.
Should get that from the applicant, I think.
Yeah. So I do have a question about signage. So there is going to be a new sign, which is shown on the site plan. But we're not looking at that.
The description said there would be no new signage proposed.
Well, the site plan does say a new sign. On the legend, on the legend number four, I think N means new. New signage on low stucco wall to match existing wall. Item four under the legend, so I just have a... Are we not looking at that?
Yeah, no, looking at the, on the wall there in the corner that does say new signage proposed. My understanding is there's no detail or nothing actually depicting the sign itself and that that appears to be new information. So there's no actual signage before us to approve tonight.
Is that typically included in the design review? Or does it typically come separately?
Ideally, I think it should come all at once.
All at once. Especially if it's, if it's on, well, I don't know if it's a, if it's an integral part of the stucco wall or, anyway.
But the fact that it's not shown, though, there'd be no way to approve signage tonight.
Typically included as a part of design review.
Right.
And, okay. I do have quest, I mean, I wish there was more information on the landscape plan also, but that's, I mean, it is what it is in terms of what's in front of us. So I guess I would ask, do you typically allow landscape plans that are this general? I'd like to see, I'd like to see what's existing. I'd like to see more specificity on plants. And I'd like, well, yeah.
Commissioner Lottis? The DE that was prepared in 2017, several iterations before, was the landscape plan that was approved, where they did the trash enclosure and the trellis. So I think there was more detail on that particular plan. On this plan, it is what was either approved or is existing, with the exception of the tree at the south... Sorry, I'm looking for the north arrow. So the southwest corner, the original fence line was behind the tree. And now the CMU wall is in front of the tree. The tree is existing, is my understanding.
Yeah, the tree on, the tree on.
Mr. Mellett is here. He's the one that prepared this plan. So we can ask him for further clarification.
Okay, and does staff know if any portions... I'm not sure where the wrought iron sections were and are they being... If so, the wrought iron sections are being replaced by stucco. Is that correct?
Yes. So the span that I was just referring to that is south of the tree at the southwest corner and is slightly darker, was a span that was wrought iron, but it was placed behind the tree before and it's moved forward. That's how that, they've enclosed that portion of that yard area. And then to the south side of the driveway, adjacent to the trash enclosure, that span was wrought iron to the point where it breaks to where the fences that connects to the staircase. And they have extended the site wall along the south side of the driveway to the eastern edge of the planting area. Did that explain it enough for you? It's hard without a diagram.
I can wait until the applicant makes the presentation.
Done, okay. I'd like to go back to the staff report first. Page two, the fourth bullet, noting that the CUP expired in 2006. I understand that part. And all building permits and previous approvals have expired. Other than the things that have been done, you approved the removal of you, the city, oh, the planning commission approved, okay, before my time. Building permits, director's exemptions, building permits, director's exemptions. Okay, is, is a CUP required at this point for the proposed use?
No, it is not. They are permitted uses if you determine that the community center meets the definition.
Be interested to hear what it actually is, that we can compare it to the definition. The administrative report, the last one, okay. Changed two spans of wrought iron fencing to stucco wall. You just mentioned them. I did not see in the site history anywhere where the wrought iron fences were ever approved, but maybe that was just back in the sands of time somewhere. I didn't see it in the history, so I wondered where they came from to be changed.
I believe they were approved under the architectural review in 2003 for Nahabidian offices. And because they're under six feet tall, they don't require a building permit, so they were installed.
On the administrative report, page three, paragraph two, it says, "The planning department issued a stop-work notice for any work that had not received a building permit or design approval." And I'm, I'd like to know what work, if any, has been done without a building permit or a director's exemption or design approval?
Those two spans of wrought iron were replaced with CMU or concrete masonry unit, cinder blocks.
So those have already been replaced?
But they have not stuccoed or finished the wall.
Okay, and that's the only thing that was...
Correct.
That was unpermitted, that was stopped?
That is correct.
Okay. Paragraph two, lines four and five, right. So that's the unpermitted work, okay, got that. Was any of that work done without the knowledge of the general contractor or the architect? That may not be an answer you can give.
That wouldn't be something that would be within staff's knowledge. I think that question is best directed to the applicant's representative.
Yes, we'll do it. All right, page four, parking. I note, this is the bottom paragraph on page four of the staff report. I note, this is the, the bottom paragraph on page four of the staff report. I noticed that when the requirement for parking is calculated, it's using 1,581 square feet divided by 75 to get 21 spaces and one more for the employee. As I read the municipal code, it also has parking requirements for office space and the drawings here say, single-story office space and residents above office space and, and the table says, community center slash educational, which presumably includes the office space, I don't know, but it says 3,096 square feet. That's in the staff report. But when we come to mark how much parking is required, we calculated it on about half that. I'd like to understand why.
Typically, when you see assembly-type uses, churches, community centers, we will park the assembly space, the big community rooms, at a higher rate, such as the one per 75, and the ancillary office type of uses that are associated with that primary use are not parked, because you figure people are going from those larger rooms out into those smaller rooms, that not everything's going to be used at the same time.
So, there's no requirement for all the rest of the space?
Correct.
No parking requirement for people that occupy the offices?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I think just to clarify, it's because the office is seen as secondary or ancillary to the primary use, so that's really built in, because the, the one per 75 square feet's a really high ratio. Like, if you had a typical office project, it's usually like four spaces per thousand square feet. So, say this was a all-office building at 3,000 square feet, you have about 12 spaces if you looked at this as just an office project. So, I see the question, but it's like you're assuming that when your primary use is a public assembly, churches, you know, auditoriums, theaters, things like that, they have a very high parking ratio, because when they're in use, they can have a huge parking demand. So, you're, you're not viewing the office as the primary use, so that's kind of thrown into that one person.
That's sort of absorbed into the assembly requirement.
Perfect way to put it. That's why the assembly is such a, a high demand rate to begin with.
Thank you for that clarification. On the administrative report, page five, archaeology, I'm just curious, you mentioned that you, that the staff gave notice to the tribe about, about the results of the PAA, I guess, and waited after 10 days. And I'm just curious, is that a standard kind of period to, to wait for a response and decide there isn't going to be one?
That is.
Okay.
It is by council resolution.
Okay, I didn't know where the, I didn't know where the standard came from, thank you. And on the landscaping, yeah, as Commissioner Lottis said, I'm just curious, does this, does this meet the city's standards for a landscaping plan? Because it doesn't say what the plants are, it doesn't say what's existing, it doesn't say what's to be added or removed. And, and I don't know, I think because the landscaping plan is part of the package that we're supposed to approve or not approve tonight, I'm not sure how to approve it. I don't have very much information.
Sure, we'll see. The landscaping was...
You said there was an earlier landscaping plan somewhere?
That's correct, under the 2017 director's exemption. The current scope of work is for the parking lot reconfiguration, ADA path of travel being notated on the plans and the wrought iron changing to stucco wall.
So, the rest of the, oh, that's 2015 for the removal of the Mexican palm, palm fans. See, I didn't see anything else in, in the history there that spoke to a landscaping plan.
If you look on the original sheet index, this is what was submitted.
Okay.
So, basically, like you said, they just resubmitted one sheet that reflects the new changes, but all of these other items had been approved.
All of those were approved?
It sounds like it's a minor modification.
Last year?
The, in August, yeah.
Oh, by director's exemption, sorry. Because I certainly didn't remember seeing it before.
Yeah, if I, I just wanted to piggyback on that, I think that nails it, is there's no tree removal, new tree planting, that's why there's no plant pallet, there's no real planting. I think what this single sheet is showing is it's documenting changes from previously approved plans, which are really hardscape and parking and the walls at this point, so, but you're totally correct, if we were planting trees or removing trees, we would typically have the name, size of the plant...
Some information as to that effect, yes.
Irrigation details, things like that, but because there's no actual planting as part of this landscape plan, that's why that information's not there.
Going to the proposed resolution, that is attachment A, page one, the, the first paragraph, the first whereas talks about a change of use and it says for a change of use to community center and an employee's residence. What is the current permitted use of that property, if any?
It is currently recognized as a vacant use.
I'm sorry?
It's a vacant building, it's been vacated for four years.
Right. My wife and I walk by the property all the time, I know it's been, it's been anonymous since the Nahabidian Exploration Group sign was taken down, but it wasn't obvious that there was anyone there or no one there, so I was curious. So, the change of, what's, what I'm saying is, this is the change of use to, what is it from? There's no current permitted use?
There are no current permitted uses on the property.
All right, none. But it did, the site history spoke of the property being occupied by the well. Previously, this is before, after 2014, but before now?
In about 2011, there were...
2011, okay. What was that and, and was that legal?
I can only speak to what is mentioned in Diana Cyverston's letter. It says it's the Well Center for Conscious Learning. I don't know what uses were in there, it was recognized as a community center on building permits.
But, okay, the, the Well Center for Conscious Learning was not an artifact of the current owner, is that right?
Yes, the current owner bought the building in 2014.
Right, that's what I thought, okay.
Three years after that center opened.
So, that's a big question mark. And I saw you had made some, made some red line changes, which I appreciate. Okay, cosmetic changes only. Attachment A, page one, the fifth whereas, that's the bottom of the page there. It says all proposed lighting is dark sky compliant. Was that part of the previous bushel of director's exemption stuff or is it, I, I don't know the basis for the contention. And, and yet we're, I mean, we're, we're supposed to agree that this is the truth.
I agree.
And I just want to know.
From the director's exemption, I was not clear if there was lighting previously approved. However, if you look at the construction schedule that I handed out, the very last line, it talks about plants and landscape lighting. I don't know if there's other lighting, so I put that condition in, just as a reminder that any proposed lighting is a, is required to be dark sky compliant.
I would just get a comment, if you looked on the, on the sheet index on the plan, that they actually have a lighting plan and lighting details, so I'm assuming they were submitted with the director's exemption.
Okay. And page two, section two, three, right, okay. Okay, page three, condition three, we know that encroachment permits are required by the municipal code title seven. Does the applicant know?
This condition puts them on notice of that if they're not already aware.
The, okay, I'm just, I'm curious where, since it's not cited in the resolution...
Is the question, the phrase responsible agency rather than public works for the condition three, where it says permit shall be issued by the responsible agency, which in this case would be public works?
Right, no, I'm, I'm just curious...
Or is the concern the lack of an express reference to Ohi Municipal Code Title Seven?
There's no, there's no reference to the municipal code after it says shall require an encroachment permit. And I, I just want to make sure that every applicant that comes before us knows that there is a written something that says this is what you're supposed to do or this is what you're not supposed to do. And that references Municipal Code seven dash 1.103A. And I'd like to add that to the whereas, if we could?
I agree, and if you would like, we could also clarify, the responsible agency would be City of Ohi Public Works Department as well.
I know the condition four, the human remains and cultural resources such, I was glad to see that added as standard language two years ago, three years ago, something like that. And I see you now have cited state law, that's excellent. So, now we know where to find that. It doesn't have to be in the municipal code, it's in the state law, but a reference, a reference to the state law like this at least puts everybody on notice of the precise requirements for them. Okay, government code. Two, good. Session seven. Condition, this is on page four of the attachment A, condition seven cited in the city's noise element of the general plan, at least, you can find the general plan if you go to the website, and somewhere in the, in there, there's a, a noise requirement. Noise element, okay. And uniform building code, is this, is this title 24 of, of the state law, of the state? What is it?
Yeah, it's title 24 of the California Code of Regulations.
Okay.
Which has also been adopted by default on the government code by the city.
Right, okay, so it's CCR title 24. Page four, condition nine, great, yes. Four and five, 10 to 17. The, the conditions 10 through 17, I also recognize as standard language, at least, you know, what I remember of having read many of these before, but I don't, I don't see the language anywhere in the code. Are these public works policies or are they, are they something with greater force of law than that?
The planning commission's resolution provides them the force of law. The planning commission has the power to impose any reasonable condition necessary or reasonably calculated to mitigate the impacts of a development project. It, it has the power to go beyond what is default provided for in the code.
So, it's simply a matter of do we agree with the words here?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you find that that's adequately protective of the surrounding community as a result of the construction impacts or not? These, I believe, are the standard conditions the city has used in the past year, well, of course, welcome to change them.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on that as well, too. It's like, conditions like this, they're more project specific, so if you had an issue with construction times, things like that, you could modify the times, you could expand or tighten the days you could perform construction, whereas some of the other conditions that are code-based, technically, like if you didn't even have them in here, the applicant would still be subject to those. You still need to get a building permit. If we didn't say the applicant will be required to get a building permit, that wouldn't mean they don't need to get a building permit. That's, that is a code-based condition that would apply to anybody who needs to get that permit, same thing with an encroachment permit. These conditions are probably in a way more important because they're tailored, they're, they're not code-driven and they would need to be attached to the project to be enforced. So, just to clarify, they're not code-based, but through approval, you're making them apply to this project with equal force.
Okay, condition 19 says the applicant shall obtain this fire department form prior to obtaining a building permit. That means they have to come in and see Sherry and show them they have the form? How, how do you enforce that kind of a requirement?
If the building permit application is filed without proof of obtaining Ventura County Fire Department Form Number 126, the building permit application will not be approved.
So, so yes, you do have to show it?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
In short.
And...
And submit it, not just show, the city will need a copy. And just for clarity's sake, condition number 18 is plainly states that the city's review of that form and the compliance with the fire code that that form demonstrates tests the state uniform fire code as applicable within the city, mindful of the fact that the city council has approved the entire state fire code and some, but not all, no, rather, none of the local amendments proposed by the Ventura County Fire Protection District. Those were rejected by the city council, finding that they were inappropriate for Ohi and its unique characteristics. Thus, the fire code...
That was a long process coming to that point.
It was a very long process and that point has been captured directly in condition number 18.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, and I want to compliment staff for, for putting this together and, and responding with so many modifications already. My, my goal, as always, is that if someone comes to the city and wants to do something, it should be clear and understandable exactly what they have to do and exactly what they can't do with citations of law or code wherever possible. And I thank you for doing that, it was a good detail job. Yes, ma'am?
I have some questions.
Great, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. This is in regards to the, the new wall that's replacing the, the iron. It was hard to tell on the plan, but I just wanted to ask if they meet the setback in height requirements, the CMU wall. Was there any issue with that or?
If you look back in 1959...
Oh.
The convent, one of the first site history bullets stated that they got a variance for the wall height at the property line to provide privacy to the inhabitants.
To the nuns, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you on that. And then I had just a couple other, a few other questions. Oh, and I'm not sure if this applies or not, but in our code, commercial properties are required to have bike racks and we usually have that in the conditions of approval. And in this situation, because of the zoning and the nature of the business, I'm not sure if that applies or not. Or may have been handled during the director's exemption, I'm not sure.
I think we're, we may be stuck in that, in that gray area again, where this is neither residential nor commercial.
Which means, because this requires parking as a requirement.
I remember being told by staff that VMU is, is commercial, that it is not residential.
Right.
And so, if it, if it is commercial, whether it's PL or otherwise, are there bike parking requirements?
I think we're looking those up right now. What I would safely say is it's not residential, so it's more akin to commercial to me, and I, I know we haven't had the presentation yet and that may be something the applicant can go to as well, because...
It's commercial office and industrial uses, but the planning commission can still...
So, the, the code is saying commercial office and industrial uses, so this may be part of clarifying, do you see it as one of those three things? We're saying, is it public, quasi-public, is it a community center? We're saying, is it public quasi-public, is it a community center? So I guess my response would be is, would a community center fit under one of those three categories? Perhaps commercial, if a commercial and office...
You said land use was general commercial.
The general plan land use designation is general commercial, the zoning is PL, so essentially public, quasi-public. While I see there's a caretaker unit on the upper floor, I mean, this is not a residential project, the site has not been used for residential purposes, so my own view, not even looking at the code, typically, non-residential sites can fall into that, you should require bicycle parking.
Okay.
You know, if it's the intent and policy of the city to require bike, or require bicycle parking for non-residential, this certainly meets that more than it would a residential project.
And I might think for a community center, you might expect a higher proportion of people arriving on bicycles than you might for anything else, because they're not carrying trunks full of stuff away.
Right, retail can be tough, because people are often leaving with bags, and it makes, but a community center, my own view, would seem to lend itself to bicycle travel.
Yeah, okay. Is there more?
I think, I just have a question for the applicant, so I think I'm good for the moment.
All right.
I just have one follow-up question on the, on the wall, so, um, because I, I actually, I did have a question about the height of the wall in terms of how it complies with standards. So there was a variance granted, so, um, where they're, they've got wrought iron and they're replacing it with stucco, does that have anything, that, you're, you're viewing the height of the wall the same whether it's wrought iron or stucco, is that correct? Okay.
That's, that's true, and stucco is hard to see through. I, I do have a question, though, I know in the, in residential areas, the requirement is that you start, you start at the corner of the two streets, in this case, and you go back 25 feet along each right-of-way and then draw a diagonal, and you're not supposed to have anything in there that people can't see through for traffic safety purposes. Is that, is that something that's already been exempted here? Because it, it... Yeah, I'm talking about this corner right here.
Mine's site.
Yeah. I happen to live in a neighborhood where my entrance onto Foothill and my entrance onto Eliso are both almost impossible to see the cross-traffic, and you, you'll pull out a foot at a time and look again to see if somebody's going to hit you.
So I think, now, you're more familiar with the site than I am, I was just asking what the height is, so if we're looking at the southwest corner there, the same area where the sign is labeled on the plan. I understand the height of the wall there is three and a half feet at that portion. So it would be different, it's not the screening and privacy wall that you might have had elsewhere, so based on that, I don't think it presents the visibility and safety issue
And as far as I know, that three-foot back 25 feet along each side of the right-of-way is for residential property. I'm not sure what it is for non-residential property, which we have all agreed this is.
This would be the question, is this 25?
Well, my first question is, does the 25-foot specification even apply here? I don't know.
Right, because it already has this grandfathered in.
Well, the light, the light colored stuff is grandfathered in, the dark colored stuff is new. So that's, that's part of the question there. Okay, any more questions for staff? All right, then we'll open the public hearing, and I'd like to hear first from the applicant. Please come forward and give us your name and what you're doing here.
Thank you, Chairman Pelosi.
You're not the owner, I presume, so...
No, I'm the landscape architect, Bill Mallett.
Okay.
And I've prepared the drawings for this project and can hopefully provide a little bit of insight into the history of how we got here today. And one thing I did want to give out. These are showing the areas that we... Their under question has changes from the director's exemption, which was, and we highlighted them on the plan, three areas.
Is that a small version of this?
Yes.
Okay. Probably easier to read, though, yeah.
Hopefully that'll clarify the areas that we're currently discussing.
I think at least we've all accepted that is residential, is what I'm getting here, but the issue shouldn't, it shouldn't be, the issue of its safety, it wouldn't matter with our uses, so...
So, then this drawing, this drawing and this drawing, if, if we look at the landscape details there, everything that is portrayed is either existing or already approved under director's exemption.
Correct.
And there's nothing that's being taken out?
No.
Other than those four Mexican fan palms?
Correct.
Which is a long time ago?
A long time ago.
Okay.
And that's actually when I became involved in the project. The four Mexican fan palms came out, I was hired as an arborist consultant, and then they also hired me to do a landscape for future development. So that's how I became involved. The plan that I just held, passed out was the approved director's exemption previously. So the new ones, you can see the differences on the new one are the...
August 2017.
Number one, two and three, number one was a wrought iron fence set back from the corner of the building, and now they're proposing to put a CMU wall at the corner of the building on the southwest corner.
In fact, have done so already.
In fact, have done so. The, and they've also built the CMU wall in the location where the wrought iron fence is at the north west corner.
Northwest corner of the building.
Number two.
Yeah.
And there's a small extension of a garden wall, less than three feet high, that was added to do some retaining at the back there, as you'll see on the new plan. And then they moved the ADA parking location also, to make it closer to the front entry, which was more appropriate. They thought they were going to use the backside, the north end, as the entry to the building, but it, now they've reconfigured and were using it. There was a full set of plans, as Kathleen noted, submitted and approved with the first director's exemption, that shows all the plant material, lighting, and compliant with the Ojai Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance and all the appropriate codes, I believe.
So the, the changes that you're looking for tonight, over and above the director's exemptions of the past.
Mm-hmm.
Are forgiveness for the two walls.
Correct.
And what else?
The two walls are being moved, moving of the...
Oh, and moving of the space and rerouting the ADA traffic to the south end of the building.
Correct.
Does that require a permit to change the ADA routing?
The only thing that requires the permit is the ADA parking striping and noting that path of travel.
So...
That's before you today.
The, the new walls don't require our approval?
Correct, because they're under six feet tall, they don't, not require a building permit.
That, that was, our understanding, and that's why the walls were moved without coming back for approval.
Very good. I keep reading it, but I, Title 10 is, there's, there's a lot of cloudiness in there for me. Thank you. Okay, so all we're worried about tonight is moving the ADA parking space and the ADA route of travel to the south end of the building instead of the north end.
And the underlying basic question about the land use, that is also before you.
Okay.
Not that I'm involved in that, that much as the landscape architect, but my understanding, isn't that approved with the prior director's exemption, or no?
No, there is no, no, that, through the chair, the prior director's exemptions did not approve a community center as a land use, that's before the commission tonight.
Okay.
So please, I'm sorry to have interrupted.
And I just wanted to address the bike parking. If you see on here, we've, at the, on the, um, south corner, there's an area that we did provide bike parking, but it doesn't show a bike rack in there. That bump out right at the beginning, and that was probably an oversight.
Oh, by the entrance?
Yes, coming from the parking lot.
Oh, I see, of course, oh, that's great.
Yeah, that, that's what that kind of widened area is for bike parking.
Yeah, okay. Is there any way to secure bicycles there? You know, you see these little things along Ojai Avenue?
There would be bike racks installed there.
Okay, okay. Oh, and there's, and there's no access to Eliso from the parking area, only to Cuyahoga?
Correct.
All right. So, um, please continue, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I had to get that out.
Oh, there was also a question about the sight line on the corner. And if you see on the plan there, there's a dashed line, a triangle, and that's the sight triangle, 25 feet.
Yeah, I saw that after we discussed it.
Yes. And the existing...
Okay.
There's the sight triangle, so it's all, it works.
We're showing there's nothing, no development within that sight triangle.
It's not on this.
And we did actually, in fact, cut the wall back from the corner, it used to come to a 90-degree point right at the sidewalk, and they pulled it back. So we've actually increased the visibility at that corner. In the previous, there was a large Cypress hedge, I don't know if anyone remembers it, huge hedge that went all the way from the corner back that we've removed, so the visibility's much better on that corner now, in the current condition. I think that's all for mine, just questions.
Go ahead, Ray.
I'd love to ask a question, it's not what's under approval tonight, but it's so I know more about this building, because I've been at this building a lot, I used to go there a lot when it was the well. So, being the proponent and a precipitation that I am, and there's a lot of pavers and pavement and whatnot, what's being done to capture, to, to, for rainwater harvesting, or how is the water being directed?
Sure.
Is it, what's happening there?
So we, the parking lot was an existing, and still is, we haven't actually, they actually haven't changed it yet, it's, it's concrete, poured and placed concrete, totally impervious.
Yeah.
So we're replacing it with pavers, which are, they're not permeable pavers, but they are more permeable than...
Spaces between the pavers that are permeable.
Yes, mm-hmm. So that, and then we've also, on the west side, if you see there, there's a bio-swell that we've created, that will catch all the roof and hardscape water that can be from the courtyard area and the roof, and is infiltrated into there.
And the trees in the parking lot areas, any water runoff going into those?
Yes, there, there's no curves on them, so they will capture water also.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Ray, you have more?
Mm-mm.
The, the land, as you know, slopes to the south and slopes to the east.
Yes.
In this property. So it appears to me that most of what's going to land on the parking area is going to run toward the southeast corner.
Yes.
Of the property, and it's not clear how you're capturing that.
So, in the landscaping between the parking lot and the wall there?
Yes.
It doesn't show in this plan, because this is just overview, there, there's a swale in there to capture water, and then there's, there's an existing drain.
Along Eliso toward the east end of the property?
Yes.
Okay, that's part of the director's exemption landscaping plan also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Bill, I don't know if you, you know this, but, um, are you able to tell us a little bit about what the new community center is all about and operating hours?
I, I really don't know about that.
Like that, okay.
I'm the landscape architect, not familiar with the use.
Who, who...
In general, I, it, it's basically what's been described, and that's my understanding.
Yeah, in the past, I mean, it sounds like it's reincarnation of the well again.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, maybe Ray can tell us, what was the well? I, I think, I mean, the owner here contends they're following in the footsteps of the well.
Well, the well had concerts there, they had different kinds of healing modalities and masseuses there that people could come see. I taught a English and lyric writing course for high schoolers there one time, things like that.
So it's in a big, a big assembly area where a lot of different activities go on?
Yeah, there were various things. It's not that large, unless it's been expanded, but...
Not to my knowledge.
Footprint of the building apparently hasn't changed.
Yeah, it's not a very large space. I can't assume what the new owners are going to do there, but, you know, yoga, yoga retreats are big here.
They're not taking a bunch of interior walls.
Very similar to that, that's my understanding, you know, yoga retreats, educational seminars.
Yeah, and people will sleep elsewhere and then come there for the classes.
Okay, um, any other questions for the applicant? All right, then, thank you very much for your time, and we'll continue with the public hearing. Mr. Wirick.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to mention a couple of things that I think need to add to the record, and then I have some questions. First of all, the, what was not disclosed to the planning commission is that certainly the last director's exemption was based on an assumption of that CUP still being in effect, which was inappropriate information, which was not correct information. And what happened was council started asking about the CUP and found that there was an issue there with the, both, if the CUP was still in effect, the terms of the CUP weren't going to be followed, and if the CUP is not in effect, then it, then we were engaged in what amounted to piecemeal DEs rather than putting it together in one thing like it should be, a DRP. So I think it's worth noting that, my first question is, my understanding is that one of the reasons for that mistake that was made by the staff, in terms of assuming that the CUP was still valid, was that it's still recorded on the title. And I was asking, my first question is, when will the planning commission have on the agenda item and take, to vote for action to take that recording off the title so we don't run into, we improve the institutional memory to follow it? Mr. Col, Luke just said, and welcome back, thank you, that you're finally back. Part of cleanup, part of cleanup is, my understanding is that since the planning commission put that CUP in place to get it off the official recording, it needs another action of planning commission, the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong on that, and that should be on the agenda, and that should happen. Is that correct?
So, not exactly.
Oh, well, thank you, we're correcting that.
I'm happy to clarify, the CUP is no longer in effect because of the applicant's own action to void it.
I know that.
That doesn't generate an action that the PC can then bless and then declare to be something...
I'm talking about getting it off the recording on the title.
Title is like a spike in a restaurant, you, you only add to it, you can never take off.
We need to add that it's not in effect.
And the vehicle to do that is, if approved, the planning commission resolution of approval, which can be recorded and can state in the recitals that the applicant's own action has invalidated CUP number whatnot, recorded on date, place. So the vehicle to do it is to do it through this permit.
Well, then my question would be, why wouldn't the planning commission have that included as a stipulation to clean up that recording, by adding another recording to the effect that it is no longer in effect, so there's not confusion in the future when someone looks up the title? That's my first question. Second, I want to point... Second, I want to point out that even though the general plan talks about commercial, and Mr. Chair, can you, will you ask me an indulgence to go through my questions, beyond the three minutes? Okay.
Go ahead.
That, it's still the job of council, and council alone has the purview of, to doing zoning consistent and compatible with the general plan. Consistency is not rendered by any other level other than the council in terms of zoning. And so, if there is a need to rezone this property, that's something that needs to come to council to be consistent with the general plan, I don't see it being done any other way. Personal feeling. In that regard, my question is, it seems to me that it's important that the stipulations include findings about the allowed use being consistent, being, this use being consistent with the definition of community center. And again, the, the definition of community center is very specific, and I would hope that the county commission would consider having a stipulation basically saying, you know, you know, my question is, why wouldn't there be a stipulation saying this is to be operated as an allowed use under the definition and the code? Because remember, the part of the definition, the code, is available for use by various groups for communal activities, implying that the allowed use is looking at an income stream coming from the activity as a communal center, as a community center, nothing else. So we don't have, I would hope that we would, you know, look at that allowed use issue, so that we don't, and my question is, we, and my concern is, and the reason I'm kind of maybe pushing the envelope here in terms of my testimony tonight, is I think it's important that we keep zoning questions where they should be at the council level, and not try to go around that in any way. It's certainly an allowed use to have a for-profit communal, a community center, but I would think, my question would be, why wouldn't there be a stipulation in any approval that included that specific requirement? Maybe even some more detail. Last question I wanted to make, a, a, a point out is that, one of the, just for a piece of history for everyone. When the four Mexican fan pumps were taken out, the staff required a mitigation fee for the removal of an invasive species. That's just a matter of fact. And that was allowed under the current code, which said whether the species being removed is invasive or not, the size of the trunk required a mitigation fee, didn't matter if it was a, you know, something, a desired tree or not. That was one of, this, this history was one of the motivations for the council to proceed with modifying the tree ordinance, so they, we weren't penalizing people for removing a invasive species. And the current code says that we have our protected species, and then we have species approved by council to be also protected, that then require mitigation fee, but to this date, the council has not seen fit to add anything to the list, but it can be added at any time by resolution.
By omission, then, removal of anything else, including invasive species, does not require mitigation?
It used to, but it no longer does.
Does not now, okay.
And that was, in fact, this was one of the examples that led to council saying, this is kind of, this is a result in our policy from our current code that needs to be addressed. So I wanted to give you a little history on that, that this, this, this fact, in fact, was one of the, the things that occurred. But I just wanted to point out a little of the history, and my, a couple of questions I have with respect to handling of the recorded CUP in terms of adding to the official records, so there's no confusion in the future, as there apparently was by staff in the issuance of these DEs, and also that we consider being careful about conditions of approval for, that are consistent with, in fact, allowed use. Thank you.
Okay, if I understand the councilman's two questions, one, how do we remove or, or otherwise negate the, the current written requirement on the title for a CUP if it is truly a community center? No. And the second question was, is it in fact a community center? Please, enlighten me, I obviously misunderstood.
What I'm asking for is, why wouldn't there be a, a particular stipulation that involves directing, as part of the approval, that the title record include that there's no longer a CUP in effect? Okay?
Okay, that was what I understood the first one.
And number two, that there's a basis for the finding of, of allowed use, according to the municipal code, and a stipulation perhaps of, of why not have a stipulation directing that in fact, this, this is a, fits the definition, and will be operated according to the definition of a community center.
Okay, it, it would have been my preference to have someone here who could speak to the question of, is this actually a community center? Is the proposed use as a community center? And I, Mr. Mellett, it's obviously outside your scope, but unless, unless I know that it is a community center, I'm not sure I could approve it at this point. We have, I think we have to ask the question of someone who knows the answer. The, the letter saying we're following in the footsteps of the well, says, serve as an educational, community, and recreation center. I'd, I'd like to know a little more from somebody about the, the actual purpose of the facility.
I will just try to reiterate, as staff, we're not the applicant, so I can't really, and that's, what you're saying is totally fair.
Not asking that question of staff.
And I think that's why the, the city attorney laid it out very well. A community center is a permitted use, not even a conditionally permitted use, so that use is totally appropriate on this site, but then the question is, is what's before you a community center?
Exactly right.
I don't know that anybody in this room is in a position to answer that question tonight. So, I, I, we could probably talk another hour and not get any further, because the appropriate person to answer that is not here.
Exactly, yeah.
Based on that, with that being sort of the 800-pound gorilla in the room, we could continue this to the next meeting date certain, and have that question answered.
I, that would be what I would be in favor of doing at this point.
Yeah, 'cause all, all I could, we could, as council member had suggested, we could put something in the permit stipulating that, but it still doesn't answer the question of if what's before you is a community use.
Right.
Any permitted use is allowed in the zoning district, a community center or otherwise.
But calling it a permitted use doesn't make it one.
That's right, you're just saying what's already in the code.
Yeah.
That it is a permitted use, but it's not answering if in fact that meets the definition, so I don't know that we can get much further tonight on that key issue.
And continuing to a date certain being October 3rd, that's a pretty full schedule already. Please, go ahead, Mr. Mellett. Our, our public hearing is still open, I haven't closed it, yeah.
Yeah, just because on behalf of my client, and I'm sure they want to move forward with the project and not have it passed down, wouldn't that just be a stipulation that the use of their use be consistent with the requirements as part of your approval tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know, because, I think that's realistic.
Oh, good.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lewis.
Well, I would like to see something in writing, and I would like to see much more of a description of what, who is going to be using it, what groups, what exactly are the activities involved, what are the, you know, what are the hours, how many people, will, will rooms at all be available to other community groups for some kind of a nominal fee rental, or free, or, you know, exactly what, what's happening here, and maybe even a floor plan where they, they can show, this is happening in this room, this is happening here, and so forth, and how many times per week, and, and again, the numbers of participants, I would like to see that kind of detail in writing from the applicant.
Mr. Mellett, please understand, if, if the two CMU walls are already built?
Mhm.
I presume that this, that this walkway here already exists, what we're really talking about holding up is the restriping of the parking?
Well, I think because there's a stop notice on the project, no construction can continue until that's removed, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so...
And so, what, what construction has been stopped?
Well, they, I know they're ready to do the parking lot.
Surface finishing of the two walls, which did not require a permit?
Right.
The walls themselves, and the restriping of the parking lot requires a permit?
Yes.
And is that specifically allowed in here? I didn't, I didn't remember seeing anything about striping.
The parking lot striping is part of the site improvements, that are referred to generically in the resolution, given that it's a much relatively minor portion of the site improvements, but the staff, the reason that staff put a stop work on places is because we had three successive DEs in short order that indicated, and then finally indicated for real that there was going to be a change in use, and that change in use hadn't been reviewed and approved, and that was the key focus. And would that stop work on everything, because you have so many DEs in a row, which raises the question of piecemealing, it raises the question of what else is happening. Hence, the whole project was bumped up to the commission for this consideration tonight.
Okay, would it, would it be proper and appropriate to, to allow the construction on the two walls and the restriping of the parking to be done, but not, but not to approve the use of the facility until we get a better definition of what's going on there? That is, can we through some sort of resolution override the stop work?
It's within the commission's power, but it would not be staff's recommendation.
Okay.
The reason being that the information before us is, is that the construction that would be finished would be for the purpose of facilitating a community center use, and with no, no knowledge of this applicant and of their purposes, but just from other past situations, the reality often is that once construction is complete, the use starts on its own. Holding up construction provides the tool, powerful tool to ensure that there's an incentive to finish the permit for the use, as opposed to, as opposed to having it start up on its own, and then we're stuck in a code enforcement situation.
Okay.
That is the basis for staff's recommendation, but it is within your power, though.
Yeah.
And there's no certificate of occupancy really required for this, that just would be the signing off that the project was complete as per plans and specifications, that kind of thing, so...
And a zoning clearance for the proposed new land use.
Right.
And a DRP for the proposed new land use.
And you stated earlier that a CUP is not required?
Not for a...
If in fact the use of the facility meets the definition in 10-23602C9.
Correct. A community center use does not require a conditional use permit in the PL zone.
Right, okay, okay.
So then the question is the continuance, and when?
Yeah, continuance and to what date certain. The meetings, the next two meetings are the 3rd and 17th of October. And if we can, if we can temporarily step forward to, to tab three, you can see there are, I'm sorry, Luke, did you say all three of these cases for October 3rd are ready to go?
I'm not certain, I, I know two of them, I will be reviewing and turning around, so...
All three are ready, okay.
Have those three been noticed, Ms. Herbrook?
Okay, so the assumption would be they'll be ready to go, then, this could be a relatively quick item tonight to wrap up considering the discussion tonight, so, I mean, a lot of that may just depend on if the appropriate person can show up and get the answers you need.
Okay. Okay, would you like to make a motion, then? Yes, you'll be chairing the meeting, too.
All right, I'll make a motion that we continue, let's go back to the item, DRP 18-009, to a date certain, which would be October 3rd, a Wednesday.
Do we have a second to the motion? If not, I'll second it for, for discussion purposes. Thoughts, Ray?
Other than it going to be a really long night, 'cause I don't think it will be a short conversation, I just want to make sure that Mr. Wirick's comments are, and proposed agenda item regarding the title and the CP, CUP, and how we navigate that, get included in that conversation on the 3rd.
Right, right.
It will be.
Okay, Kathy, you're okay with the motion, you made it.
I'm okay with it.
Kathy?
Yes, and so, I'm looking for information in writing on the use, and there, it looks like, it seems like we should look at the signage also, the sign.
If the signage is included, it would, we'd need to see it, other than just a location shown on a site plan.
And, they did discuss the bike racks, but just something about that in the resolution.
And is having something in writing acceptable if the applicant is not able to be here in person?
The applicant or an authorized representative to speak to the topic, I would think.
I would think we'd want to, either the owner or representative, because then, otherwise we can't ask questions.
Just clarifying. Yeah, the owner seems the most appropriate person to speak to the use of the facility.
In fact, just one clarification, if we're coming back to, was a floor plan was mentioned, because we currently don't have a floor plan, if you wanted to see like essentially how it's programmed.
I think it would be helpful, because then we can see what's taking place and where, so, yeah.
It might help me, know whether it meets the definition as well.
Exactly.
Okay.
So I'll say add those items to my motion.
Okay, so we had the CUP, the CUP stuff, and how we, how we deal with the title, if anything. The actual use of the facility?
Right, definition?
Yeah, signage.
Signage, okay.
At the bike racks.
Bike racks, and the recording of the new resolution.
Right.
Per, per council member.
Oh, yes, that's the, the CUP, how we deal with the, the title on the property. Okay, so all of that's in your motion?
Yes.
To include at the continued date certain?
Yes, so I'll second.
Any more discussion? Let's have a...
Oh, that's right, you made the second, Steve.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I seconded the motion just for discussion purposes, but yes. Yeah, okay.
Or 3rd.
Could we have a roll call on that motion, then, please?
Powers?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Pelosi?
Yes.
Latas?
Yes.
Thank you, did, did that give you enough to work with, Mr. Mellett? Okay, okay. The, the last thing we want is to have some confusion about what the commission wants to hear about the next time.
Yes, no, I think that's very clear.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. Let's move on, then, to item three, future agenda items. So we're adding this to 14 West Eliso, four items. Okay, report from staff on, on what you have planned for the commission, two weeks, three weeks hence? Yes, it is, is that right? No, it's two weeks hence.
Two weeks, two weeks. I'm relying on this chart that we're all looking at and trying to get back up to speed, but I've been assured that we have these reports coming, so...
Okay.
And I know you had talked about the October 16 special joint meeting as well, coming almost two weeks after the next planning commission meeting, so...
And that one, that one's gonna be at Sarzati Park, is that right, at the Boyd Center?
Let me look on the city's calendar, hold on.
Or maybe it was the Saturday, there was a Saturday, the 20th, maybe that was at the Boyd Center.
Well, this is the, this is the...
Oh, that's, that's a different thing.
Oh, no, that's one for OP.
Yeah, that's... Yeah. That's, that's your six miles of Highway 33.
Right. Which I went to the first one.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I can't remember now. Maybe the 16th is here in the council chambers, and the 20th is at the Boyd Center.
It doesn't stay on our calendar yet.
Okay.
We'll confirm.
And the 20th, that was, it was like 10 to noon, or 10 to 1, or something like that, I think. I would hope that we'd all be there. It was, it was an awkward situation on the 11th. We had one member already known to be absent.
Right.
But no other planning commissioner showed up, and that was...
Oh, no.
That was bad. So I hope, if, if we would all, and please pass on, or Sherry, maybe you can query the commissioners that are not here this evening, and, as well as those that are here, about attendance on the 3rd and the 16th and the 20th. The 17th, it looks like we don't have anything right now, but we should. I see solar guidelines out at the 7th, 7th of November. That's the, the 58% rule versus the 30-degree rule, or some such? Yeah.
Do I like considered change?
Is, is that a, because I know we went through this, we went through the solar access guidelines once before and made a recommendation to count, so I don't remember the details of it. But is there something else that we plan that, that staff proposes to change?
What's before this item, or what is this item, is the finishing of that process. As you recall, the commission considered and approved solar design guidelines, which then went to the city council and were approved on October, September 11th. The, that item also directed staff to prepare an ordinance changing the code section that...
Oh, okay.
Had the 58% requirement to a 30-degree requirement. That is what's coming forward, is the ordinance to make that change in the code.
We're basically revoting on a text amendment in the solar access guidelines.
Correct.
Okay.
Fulfilling the broad policy direction that already was approved, recommended for approval by this commission and approved by the council.
Right. Right. Okay.
It's kind of a cleanup.
And, yes, I know DRP 18006, that one is that old gas station at the corner of Bryant Street.
Oh.
And they, someone wants to purchase it and turn it into another yoga studio.
Not purchase, lease. Sorry.
Oh, lease it. Okay. They want to, to acquire use of the property and make a yoga studio. And the hip vegan outdoor dining, does outdoor dining in and of itself require a permit?
Yes.
Okay. And alcohol is a state-level permit?
And a local permit.
It does require a local permit as well. Okay.
Yeah, I believe our local requirements for CUP, for alcohol service.
And village mixed use.
Thank you.
Not in commercial, but village mixed use is what they're located in.
Yes. Thank you.
Maybe someday we can get down to a smaller set of generic zones and land uses and design guidelines. Okay. Any other questions of, of staff on future agenda items? Thank you very much for the detail. And again, Kathy Nolan will be running the meeting, because I'm going to be out of town that day.
I'd like to interject something, if I could, Chair.
Sure.
Just in terms of my schedule, because you asked Sherry to check in who will be here.
Yeah, I already had done the poll.
Well, you had. Okay.
For the 16th at 6:00, for the TPA, the grant discussion, and all said yes, except Commissioner Bowles.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be gone October 8th through the 23rd. Anything in there, I'll miss.
So you'll miss the 16th, 17th, and 20th?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Oh, here's presentation of preliminary designs for Highway 33 multimodal and community enhancement study. I think you have something to say about this.
I mentioned last time that I went to the first workshop that they had, and this is the second one. And that's, this is for that six-mile stretch from Casita Springs to the Miramani area. And it's a Caltrans grant of Ventura County, I think it's the local government commission, Sergeant Town Planning, who actually did our neighborhood plan, and Nelson Nygaard and our own Paul Crabtree are all working on that project. I plan, if I can, I'm planning to attend again.
Well, and I guess we would, yeah, we would want to invite anyone out there in radio and television land.
Right.
To consider coming to this meeting Wednesday, October 10th, at the Oakview Park and Resource Center, 555 Mahoney Avenue in Oakview. If you're going down from Ojai, Mahoney Avenue is the first street after the stoplight at the Shell Station. So head down 33, turn right on Mahoney, and you'll find there's, it's an, an old library or elementary school or something there. Yeah.
So just for my own clarification, I saw on the, the matrix for upcoming projects, the... I believe, it looks like that's listed for October 20, the Sa, the Saturday. It says flyer attached. I just wanted to make sure that it's actually on the Wednesday, the 10th.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Okay. So that's just a mistake on the matrix, then. Okay.
Okay. I was wondering about that.
This description is for October 10th.
Yeah, I'm assuming the flyer is right, but I just wanted to make sure it wasn't changed.
And Ojai Day is October 20th.
Yeah, I think those two got mixed up. That's probably...
And, and the second ATP outreach meeting is Saturday, the 20th.
Wait. Say that again?
Really? Outreach.
Oh.
This is, this is...
Here, I have the, you want me to, you want me to announce it?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Perfect timing. So this flyer, it's all actually available on the City of Ojai website, I think on the Public Works link. Yes, it is on the link. Basically, two public workshops are going to be held, and this is in regards to the ATP grant. One of them is tomorrow night, September 20th. That's Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the Ojai Valley Women's Club, 441 East Ojai Avenue. The second workshop will be held September 29th. That's a Saturday, 10 AM to 12 PM at City Hall, right here, 401 South Ventura Street, Ojai.
So what's the notation here for October 16th?
That's the...
That's the meeting between, with the planning commission and city council.
If I could...
Guarding this.
It sounds like that's a third ATP outreach meeting.
It is, but it's a bit of a different goal.
Right.
The first two meetings are outreach, information provision, questions, answers, discussion with the general public in a workshop format with no, not the formality of a council planning commission meeting.
Okay.
The October 16th meeting, Tuesday, 6 o'clock here, is a formal public meeting with the city council and the planning commission, for the two bodies together to both discuss the project, ask questions. A great opportunity for the planning commissioners to ask questions about the project in a public setting, and also for receipt and discussion with the public generally. The first two workshops, I expect there will be commissioners, council members present, but they are not council meetings, they're not formal commission meetings. The 16th is an opportunity for the council and the commission together to discuss the project at length, together with the general public.
Okay. And September 20th, you said it was at the Women's Club?
Uh, September 20th, yes, is at the Ojai Valley Women's Club. And then the September 29th, the Saturday meeting, is here at City Hall. And these are public outreach meetings.
Okay.
For the, I'll just read it out loud, City of Ojai ATP Project Grant Concept Review, public outreach meetings.
Okay. So the 20th and the 29th are not formal meetings. They are meetings where commissioners' attendance is encouraged but not required, as it would be for any regular Brown Act-type meeting.
Right. In other words, they're not Brown Act meetings.
Yeah.
Of any particular body. They're public workshops, with the goal being education, discussion, communication with the general public.
Got it.
And I believe those are led by the Public Works Director, Greg Grant.
Yes.
In consultation with Caltrans, recalling that Caltrans is the lead agency for this grant project.
Okay. And, yeah, and presumably the 20th and the 29th, the Public Works Director will be there.
He'll be at all of these meetings.
And, and, and the October 16th meeting.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Any other questions about future events? All right. Let's move on to commissioners' reports. Is that right? Oops. There. Yes, reports and comments. I'm up first, I guess, with the September, oh, there's only one, September 11th meeting of the city council. It was a long one again, as I recall. We all got out of here around 11 o'clock. There were presentations from the Library, the Green Coalition, Ventura County Transportation Commission announced that henceforth, students at Ventura County colleges, and I guess that's Ventura College and Cal State CSU, CSI?
There's Moore Park College and Oxnard are all part of the Ventura County.
Okay. Anyway, students at Ventura County colleges will now ride all the VCTC buses and the Ojai trolley, they said, for nothing. You just show your student ID for admission to the transportation. There was some discussion of the banner policy. We're all familiar with at least one banner that runs across Ojai Avenue, right at the, at the post office. And there was a, a large discussion about how much should we be charged, how much should the city charge for someone to put up a banner? And is it fair for organizations that have had particular weeks, because the banners are up in one-week increments? Is it fair that, that, that everyone gets grandfathered for all the weeks that they've had in the past, which tends to mean that new entrants never get on? There was, in fact, presented a method of deciding, a point system on three or four topics, to decide who gets the highest score for a particular week and gets to put their banner up. And one of the three or four criteria happened to be longevity putting up a banner that week, which gave arguably an inordinate amount of preference to people that had already been doing that, like the tennis tournament, or the music festival, or the storytelling festival, or whatever. At any rate, I, there, there was no decision reached, but a subcommittee comprised of members Haney and Francina will take a look at the topic and report back. The residential solar access guidelines, 5-0 to adopt the resolution that we pushed forward, but now there's, there's some more work for us as a planning commission to do, at least in one area. And also, there was a request, I'm not sure whether that was part of the original motion, for staff to provide a rationale for VMU exclusion from the solar access guidelines, which is currently in the, in the code now that was approved. We, we took no particular note of that, I think, as a commission. We just passed it on. It was already in the, already in the code, I think. And so perhaps that's something we should look at as well, since they've asked staff to look at it. Perhaps we should consider that as part of, so we might have a two-part text amendment on the solar access guidelines. There was a review and discussion of potential revisions to the code regulating cannabis manufacturing, and a great deal of discussion about volatile and non-volatile solvents used to take various impurities out of cannabis before it moves to the dispensaries. And there was a three-to-two approval to direct staff to go think about it some more, I think.
And to bring back the documents.
Yeah. Oh, and to bring, okay. Yes. Okay. Right. Determine whether to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, and three-to-two, it was approved. Amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance regarding the definitions in the municipal code, that was approved. It basic, it was a small change, but it defined legal, meaning both legal conforming and legal non-conforming. And that was not specifically done before. And I think they, I don't see anything. Oh. They made some awards, Historic Preservation Commission awards. And then there were some draft proposed amendments to the Cultural and Historic Preservation Ordinance. And there, there were a number of discussions about, um... Proposed amendments to Title IV, Chapter 8. Okay. And, and also proposed amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance exempt from SEQA. And that was public, that was continued to September 25th. So no action was taken on that topic. End of report. We don't have any others that needed doing, right? That one's done. And Mr. Powers, you're up next on September 25th.
Yes.
So, then reporting back to the commission on October 3rd. And thank you very much for switching.
I was going to say, thanks for you switch with me.
Well, that way we get, we get both September 11th and October 9th covered.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about reports? We all see our names where they are. And only one MAC meeting canceled so far. That's kind of an off-and-on thing. All right. I see no other business before the commission.
I'd like to make an announcement, if I could.
Oh, please do.
As many of you know, Ojai is in designated international city of peace, and we have a sign at the entrance at the Wy by the Vons. Those signs are being replaced with a sign that still says Ojai International City of Peace, but also nuclear-free zone, since the council agreed to that. So a new sign's going up. And that leads me to this weekend, on Sunday, September 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM in Libby Park, is the celebration of the United Nations International Day of Peace. This is our fourth, I say "our" because I'm on the core committee of that, I'm one of the producers. So it's our fourth year doing the UN International Day of Peace, and our second year in the park. So there'll be speakers and lots of different performers at the gazebo, different, different exhibitor booths, and from all sorts of different subgroups in our community, rep, rep, peace builders representing education and arts and religion and the environment, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a fun day in the park. Bring a picnic and come out.
11 to 5 at Libby Park.
This Sunday.
On Sunday.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. And just one more reminder for the folks out there that might be watching. We do have ATP, that's the Active Transportation Program, is that right, grant for improvements to, oh, things like crosswalks and lanes and bicycle lanes and such within the city, and trees, right, on September 20th at the Women's Club, September 29th here at City Hall, and then October 16th, also here at City Hall, to talk with the public about the ATP grant and gather public opinion on what should be done with the money that's available to us from the state. And final reminder, October 20th, not that far away, that's Ojai Day, Saturday, October 20th. Come out and enjoy all sorts of things along two or three blocks of, of Ojai Avenue. And I presume we're going to have a mandala again at, at the center of town.
Classic.
Yes. A wonderful thing to see. Okay? There being no other business unless, unless I hear from a commissioner, then we'd like to have our city council liaison come up and speak with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, everybody. Nice to be here tonight. I, I thought that even though it was slim pickings at the last joint meeting, we still got somewhat of a discussion going. Welcome, Luke. Welcome back. We've missed you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I don't have anything in particular. I, I just wanted to say that as a, just as a side note, that your vote here for the tiny homes moving forward was three to two in favor. And when it got to the council, it was, it was not, we did not vote to adopt the resolution, and that was a three to two vote against. So that kind of stopped at the city council level. It may come back again. But the council is still considering some sort of a, perhaps a, a community, some tiny home, you know, cluster or community. And I think that's going to come before the council sometime soon.
Sounds like a new zone.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know that much about it, so, I'm just saying that, that for those in favor of the tiny homes
Oh, not an overlay.
And those that have supported tiny homes, it's, it's not all lost yet.
Oh, we are.
And Councilwoman Francina announced after the vote for everybody to find out who's in favor of tiny homes, who, you could vote for that person, so that after this next election, it can come back again and maybe be passed, so.
And we currently have three open seats on the council and three candidates.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
So-
I guess there's going to be, I guess, well, I know there's three open seats, but there's going to be four on the ballot, but I understood that one of the four had decided to back out from running, but she would still be on the ballot. I don't, I haven't talked to anybody about that, so, I'm-
Don't discern that when they get their ballot, not knowing that person is no longer-
I don't think they will. And of course, I suppose that person, even though they've announced they're not running, could come back and run anytime they wanted to. I mean, when, you don't, it's not something that you legally have stopped, that you backed out of, because your name is on the ballot, so. You know, politics is a, is a strange undertaking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, after over eight years on the council, happy that I'm not in the thick of it this year. And this, this is the end of the quarter, so this will be the last time that I'll be the liaison to the planning commission. And I just wanted to say how much I've appreciated being the liaison, you know, my heart has always been with the planning commission, having been on it for ten years. And not seeking reelection, this will be the last time that I really, unless I have something that I'm coming to see.
You can sit out there and tell us what we're doing right and wrong.
I won't be the liaison again, so I'm going to miss, miss doing that. So I appreciate, as we all do, all the hard work that this commission does, so.
Well, thank you for your service.
If anybody has any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer it, but if not, just thank you very much, keep up the hard work.
Thank you for your service on this commission and on the city council.
It's been a pleasure to do it.
It's going to be sad not to see your smiling face up there.
Oh, well, thank you, that's very kind of you to say, thanks.
Okay. There being no other obvious business before the commission, our meeting's adjourned.